...of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call this meeting West Burne City Council to order roll call please.
Crowner?
Here.
Raleigh?
Here.
Knightmeier?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
Need to perfect approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, approve consent agenda items one through six which are the minutes from regular city council meeting on September nineteen, two thousand eighteen. Approve finance officer Sadler's attendance at the Iowa Nissable Finance Officers Association Fall Conference. Approve Fire Chief Ryan's attendance at the two thousand eighteen Iowa Instructors Conference. Approve payment to Quad City Analytical Services. Approve payment clerks, approved clerk's monthly financial report for August two thousand and eighteen. And approve the claims in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-six cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Before we get into staff reports, I wanna, uh, everybody know that knows that our former police chief Frank Newberry has retired and we had a little retirement party here for him today, but I personally wanted to say a few words because he had a lot of visitors today and, uh, tell, uh, this isn't gonna work so I'm gonna come out there. Frank, come on up. I wanna kinda present Frank with a little flag here that got formed and, uh, it says, honoring your service, police team Frank Newberry, in appreciation for twenty-eight years of loyal dedicated service, the city's citizens of City of West Burton. This is too heavy for you. Yeah, it's, but... I was thinking here for a minute, let everybody see it's beautiful. Council seen it, but it's a very nice flag so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to wish you the best and I appreciate the friendship and that and I sure as hell am gonna miss the arguments. So, I'm gonna have to train Jesse on those. You're gonna have to train me come back. I wish you and Lori the best for the future and, uh...
Thank you so much.
Good health, hopefully.
I hope so.
And, uh, I wanna get you underway with driving around your Corvette, yeah, longer tonight. Anyways, I wanna say a few words.
Thanks a lot Frank for everything. And I'm the same way with you Hans with all the arguments that we got in there, we had a few of them, but, um...
Frank, thank you for your years of service buddy, you know that. You quit one year too early, you were supposed to stay till I was done. We made that deal right here one night if you'll remember. I got one more year after you stuck me with this guy, but that's... No, seriously, as, as living here all my life, I appreciate your years of service to our town.
It's been a work, I thank for the town for the friendship they gave me and all the help they gave me through the years on this job. You know, it's almost like a family, this town.
Local boy made good.
Yep.
Okay?
Loved it, great career.
Yeah, thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you guys.
Alrighty, let's get on the road. Lori owns period.
Thank you so much everybody.
Thanks Frank.
Thanks Sheriff.
I still appreciate the call.
Yeah.
That one day.
Oh yeah, no problem. I've, I've done that more than once, but different people.
Tell me how it's going too fast.
Gave me a ticket.
Thank you.
We'll see you around.
I'll be around.
I just had somebody in the back. Good job Hans, thanks.
Okay, with that, we'll go into staff reports, Dan?
Only have one thing, uh, the Greater Burlington Partnerships having their manufacturer's lunch at Pizzazz, uh, this coming Friday, eleven to one, I can't make it, I'm out of town that day, but we have a, we've sponsored a table so there's a place for you to sit if you show up, um, they're gonna fill it with chamber staff if not enough of us show up, so...
I, I had planned on going, so...
Eleven to one?
Eleven to one.
Anybody else wants to join me, you're welcome.
What days at a time?
Friday.
Friday. I'll check and give you a call back.
Yeah, let me know, I can, I'm sure Rachel would be happy to hear about it a little bit ahead of time, she said it wasn't a problem, I was, told her I'd announce it and let her know if anybody was taken.
What time was that Hans?
Uh, it starts at eleven and goes to one.
Thank you guys.
They usually have a pretty good speaker come. Anybody have anything for Frank, uh, for Dan, I'm sorry. Alright, Randy?
Just a couple things, the street projects are moving along pretty fast right now, um, I talked to Matt Walker, I actually got an email from him this afternoon. Miller's planning on putting asphalt down on the overpass Friday, weather permitting. Um, Hickey's been really going pretty good doing the concrete patching on Gear Avenue, that's moving along really well and if they can get the asphalt down, then next week they'll jump over to the other side and should keep moving along pretty good over there. And Mount Pleasant Street is moving along pretty good right now and I did talk to Dan Hickey which is the contractor that's gonna do the concrete work since, as soon as they get the, the asphalt milled off over here and he's planning on moving in right behind them, so I expect those two projects to continue and, and, uh, hopefully we get everything taken care of yet this fall.
Did they start on Beaverdale yet?
Not yet.
There was people out there today.
Well, they're doing, working the county.
Oh, yeah.
It's north of us.
Yeah.
They haven't started on ours yet.
Yeah.
Anything, anybody have anything for Randy?
I would quickly say only because I picked on him pretty bad at our last meeting that the Mount Pleasant project does seem to be moving forward and I had, I, I now have great confidence it'll be done before the fourth of July. I, I like what I said at the last meeting. I'm sorry.
I'm with you Rod.
It was going pretty slow, but they've switched contractors and things seem to be moving and, and I appreciate that happening.
I hope things move along on this side of the street.
Uh, me too.
Alrighty.
Chief?
I'd just like to remind residents of, of West Burlington that if they see anything suspicious in their neighborhood, don't hesitate to give us a call, we've had a couple, uh, garages and vehicles burgarized over the last couple weeks, so if they see anything, if they have video or anything that they would like to turn over to the police department that'd really help us out catching some of these guys out vandalizing and, uh, breaking into vehicles.
Other than nine-one-one, is there a good number for people to call?
Uh, no, it's just that or the non-emergency number is, uh, through Descom would be, I think it's six-seven-one, seven-zero-zero-one is, uh, is the non-emergency phone number for Descom that they can report anything to. Net lines, uh, obviously answer twenty-four hours a day too, so...
Anybody else have anything for Jess? Other chief?
Uh, I've got, uh, starting to line up the fall inspections for our different properties. Already've got seven-on-ones Pennington lined up for next Monday and we'll be going from there, I've got a couple other commercials to do and some residential's, uh, that'll fall in this fall, you being one of them, right? We've got that one property we talked about before, we'll get that knocked out. Um, fireside, we started our driver training a couple weeks ago, Monday night, we had stage two of it where the guys went out and pumped with two experienced pump operators. Um, I didn't hear any bad reports come back, so things are moving well on that, we've got one more where they'll actually start putting it all in together and start driving. We've got live fire training coming up in Minneapolis at the end of the month that, uh, Paul Barnett's getting everybody trained up for, our new people, so they'll be able to start writing on calls, uh, they're progressing real well. And then, uh, we've got fire prevention week next week with the schools, we're gonna be going up to the elementary school, doing a coloring contest and, uh, the winners from each grade are gonna get a ride to school in a fire truck if their parents agree to it, um, just kind of reward and a little bit of recognition for those kids. And then tomorrow night, we're hosting the, um...
Unity night.
Unity night for the football, thank you. And, uh, so we've been cleaning the station up, getting things organized, we're gonna be serving up tacos for the football team and guys are looking forward to that as well.
Can we come up?
Gotta eat my cooking.
Trying to try everything once. Anybody have anything for Sean? Y'all, you guys going on?
Not tonight.
Leslie?
I've been working on the audit and finish up the audit, that should be in the first meeting in November, on the agenda for that meeting, and completing the annual report, uh, November, that first meeting in November, we'll probably do the TIF report too, the state TIF report and Spears should be here also to do, uh, to go over their report and I've been working on that and claim property report, I'll hopefully have that submitted this week.
Rod, you guys going on?
No, thank you sir.
Rick?
No, Rod said something about the streets and that anything. The only other thing I have on new business, I would like to take number... seven and move it at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
Yeah, we can do that. Voice?
Nothing.
Chris? Okay. Anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? It's your chance. Okay, I got a proclamation to read and it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October twenty eighteen. Whereas domestic violence, dating violence and stalking affects women, children and men of all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds, causing long-term physical, psychological and emotional harm, and whereas one in three Americans has witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children who experience domestic violence are at a higher risk or failure in school, mental illness, substance abuse, suicide, and may choose violence as a way to solve problems later in life. And whereas domestic violence in rural communities exists as hidden, silent and often unrecognized crime, is often under-reported, and whereas through the inspiration, courage and persistence of victims of domestic violence, their children and advocates, our communities are learning to recognize the impact of violence in the home and within intimate relationships. And whereas a domestic violence intervention program has worked to end violence in intimate relationships for more than thirty-nine years through the collaborative partnerships of advocates, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders and private citizens, and whereas our community's achievements should be commended and we must continue our commitment to respect and support victims of domestic violence and to prevent fu- future violence in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the West Burne City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand eighteen to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in West Burlington, Iowa, and urge all citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence, dating violence and stalking from our community. Signed this third day of September twenty eighteen in West Burlington, Iowa. Should be October, but... Like to present this to you. And thank you for working on that. Thank you. Alrighty, new business. Item one, item number one is to consider change order number five from Leander Construction for the wastewater treatment plant project, in the amount of seventy-two thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and ten cents.
So move. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call, well Ben's here if anybody wants to ask him any questions. And see anybody jump up, so... Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two is consider entering into an engineering service agreement with Snyder and Associates for repairs to the south lift station. Uh, total amount is eighty thousand dollars, fifteen thousand is split in, in the fifteen thousand and sixty-five thousand dollars for design work and oversight and all this good stuff. And the engineering estimate for that lift station is around five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, that's very rough, I mean, we're pretty early, it could be three hundred to five hundred thousand range.
See how the bids come in.
We're not really supposed to even be doing design work yet, but we have been.
We have been, yeah. So we need to pay you.
Yeah. It's a lot of money. Did I really say five hundred thousand dollars?
Completely replacing the lift station, putting in new grinder pumps, uh, the pumps now are getting clogged up with rags from the hospital and all kinds of stuff, so we're putting in, uh, some pretty pricey pumps and a new wet well, um, yeah.
Wow.
Got a motion, but I don't have a second yet.
Second, sorry.
Motion with support, any further discussion?
I should've argued with that EPA lady a long time ago.
What's that?
Oh, that EPA lady out there.
Oh.
Argued with her, you know. Go ahead, I'm just...
Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider memorandums of understanding agreements with the city of Burlington regarding cost-sharing proportions of street reconstructions on agency and Mount Pleasant Street. Dan, you can explain this.
We've talked about all these numbers before, but, uh, the city of Burlington wanted to make the, make the formal for you guys to adopt, but, um, it's basically, we're paying the match for the portions of these projects that are in West Burlington. And then they're paying us for the portion of our agency street project that's in Burlington. So there's money, a little bit of money going both ways, um, and this is for the Mount Pleasant Street project, the, the, or the Agency Street Rise project, which is that in front of GE and, uh, our Agency Street project from Bickles to, to West Burlington Avenue that's in West Burlington, so...
Which we've already all agreed on.
Yeah, we talked about this several times before and they were, I originally thought they were just gonna invoice us, but, uh, their new engineer wanted, uh, do it this way, so...
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number four is consider resolution waiving the preliminary, approving the final plat for Victory Lane subdivision.
Motion. Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is consider payment for Renninger Associates for engineering services related to the Agency Gear Resurfacing Project and the Broadway Agency Reservicing Project in the amount of ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion to approve, support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number six is to consider payment to Snyder and Associates for engineering services related to the wastewater treatment plant project, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So move.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is consider resolution appointing Eldon Nelson and David Bog to police sergeant positions and establishing the salary for the positions.
I just, I'm gonna have a question. I want you two gentlemen to realize first that I don't have anything against you as far as what's going on here, but the only thing that I remembered back when Alex was here is that if we had a blood-related of two officers by blood or marriage or anything that we could not have one person higher than the other one, is that correct, Dan?
No, not necessarily, we talked about that before, but, uh, Jesse and I talked this through and since there's two equal sergeants, that if, uh, if, uh, if there's an incident that needs to be taken care of with Dylan, then Eldon will handle that.
And, and I'm not gonna really, you know, argue about anything, even though I had two pieces of cake and you told me to... But anyway, you have to remember that back when Alex, that Ringo did not know at the time and that I supported him as far as getting, um, sergeant stripes at that time. At that time, um, I kept on getting no's all the way through Alex and Frank, um, and yourself, uh, because of his son. I just wanna make sure that it's kind of the same public, policy, I don't want anybody to get upset, and I think I knew Ringo probably knew about it, but not by me.
I think it's a little different since there, then we were talking about one sergeant and now we have two equal sergeants, so that kinda takes that, 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 that gives you the ability to deal with that situation.
I, I, I knew you were gonna probably say that, but we had a lieutenant that came in there and then when I come in, I said we definitely need a lieutenant and then a sergeant at that time, 'cause Ryan was going to another department, besides that, he was on second shift at that time. I just wondered if there were, if we're gonna have an incident with a problem or anything like this.
Like I said, the chief and I discussed it, I think we've got a way around it, I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
I feel confident with what we have presented here with David and Dylan.
Well, that's fine, I just didn't want Ringo and, uh, to feel denied over all the years.
I, no, I, I completely understand that and like I said, I, I opened it up to, to everybody that, um, that wanted the position and Ringo, Ringo at that, uh, never turned in a application or interest in applying to be sergeant this time, so...
Okay. Do I have anything to answer you guys, I was just, I'm playing it safe 'cause I know you have a brother, correct?
No, it needs to be discussed, absolutely.
Yes, Ringo?
I, I went and carried that twice, I did not know that Coach was gonna talk about this.
Oh, you know me, if I wanna bring something up, I'll bring it up.
I did not know that that was like that, but that happened to me twice, I did, I, and that was one of the reasons why I decided not to apply this time, but I don't think there's gonna be any problem with Dave working on, both, uh, these guys are, are gonna do the job and I feel comfortable with the rest of the guys.
Okay, and the other guys feel comfortable too?
I don't, they have no problem with the, uh...
You guys have talked to them too?
Uh, yeah, no one's had any problem with that.
Okay. And I know you didn't know that back in the past with that and everything else, but I do appreciate what you done and I knew for several years, and then we moved lieutenants in instead of having sergeants. Um, that's the only reason, now we don't have a lieutenant and we got two sergeants, so I just wanna know how this works out. And you do not have any problems with your brother, do you? Does he have a problem with you?
He is getting married this weekend, so that might change.
Okay.
We've worked in a similar situation before at Iowa State, um, where I was, I mean, it was the same situation.
I, I have never seen any problem with it, I never seen anything with, with, uh, Ringo or his boy that played for me and everything else, so I didn't think there was any trouble. Uh, that's where Frank and I always got in the little arguments and hassles and Alex just kinda blew it off at that time, but...
Absolutely.
No, I appreciate all you guys and everything you do, I just didn't want, you know, problems just to have in that point in there and, of course, I'll bring it up and, and, uh, everybody just kinda hide it, but...
Absolutely, it needs to be discussed, uh...
Right, and we never really get an opportunity to discuss, you know, the things that go on and then pop up, sometimes we just show up and here it is and...
Yeah.
You know, and we just get into it, so, um, but, okay, alright.
As far as issues, I guess we've just discussed if there, if there are issues, a nepotism situation, it would not be handled by, um, it, for example, if it were Dylan who were needing to be disciplined or needing to be promoted or something like that, I would not play a factor in that decision making.
Well, I know working with a company that I got ticked off because I got overlooked and I had a lot of years and I, you know, I just had, didn't have the little piece of paper that I was smarter than I was, that was the only thing, and he never... But anyway, um, just wanna know, Ringo, I appreciate you getting up and, and saying something on that, I appreciate you two guys, um, act like you've had conversations and that stuff and notice what's going on. Thanks a lot Mayor.
Hey, I still need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support. Okay, there's a motion with support, any further discussion?
Jesse, are they gonna rotate shifts?
They are gonna work the two twelve-hour shifts, so they'll, you know, minus the holidays or vacation, there will be a sergeant out from one, um, and it, it explains it a little bit more in the personnel manual, but for the most part, they'll work twelve-hour shifts, so they'll work from one PM to one AM, so we'll have that second shift coverage and part of the third shift coverage of having a, a commanding officer out, so...
And just to make sure everybody understands, your command structure within the police department is?
Chief, sergeant, then senior, um, patrolman, then goes down to regular patrol officers.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, so we'll just go back to item number seven, 'cause Rick got his questions answered. So that's consider changes to the employee personnel manual, which...
Motion to approve, support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Basically that just changes the, uh, overtime pay from where it's overtime now, eight hours, after eight hours, uh, where we have include the twelve-hour shifts, where overtime doesn't kick in for these, the sergeant positions till the twelve hour, after twelve hours. Roll call.
Lees? Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried, and by the way, congratulations gentlemen.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not always easy to be a leader.
Do I have to re swear them in or... Probably not, no, I already swore at him once.
Just do that, let's go.
Little stripes on, that's not...
And if there is problems between David and Dylan, Dad's sitting right there.
I knew he came in on this side here.
Alright.
He'll take care of it for me.
Item number nine is considered purchase of three bulletproof vests for a police department in the amount of two thousand, eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
So move. Support, and there's a motion with support, any discussion?
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number ten is consider purchase of three rifles for the police department, in the amount of three thousand, nine-hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion with support, any... Any discussion? You buying cannons?
Yes.
Okay.
I had to ask, cause that word rifle bothered me there for a minute. I didn't know if they were this long or if they were this long.
In between.
I gotcha.
I said the staff today, maybe we should deny it. Maybe Brown, Brown Owls will cover that for us.
Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Absolutely aye.
Motion carried.
Never have too many guns.
Item number eleven is consider resolution appointing Jesse Logan as deputy fire chief and Brandon Paduano as lieutenant in the fire department.
This I have to have a conversation with, cause I have a problem with this one. Jesse, I don't have any fault with you as far as working on the fire department or anything else. The only thing that bothers me about this is that you're the chief of police now, okay? And that if you did go to a fire and Ryan was gone and you were there commanding the fire going off and these guys run in with a big shootout, I need you with these guys.
It'd be easy.
Well, I know you're gonna tell me that. When I was young, I always told everybody I can do three or four things, but sometimes it don't work out. You don't know when that's gonna be an incident. And don't take me wrong on this one here, okay? But I have to say no.
That's fine.
Okay? Now, I don't know if I can, I cannot ever pronounce his name and he played football for me. Always called him a pod. Now I don't know if I can go ahead with his name or not. Cause I don't know how that work is in budget time. I couldn't do that if it was in one sentence and it was combined. Cause it's an and and you're voting on both? And I would have to go no total.
Well, you can separate them out, but...
Okay, if you say, if, that's all I'm asking.
I'll give you my five cents worth of what it's worth. The fire department is set up just like the police department. It's a paramilitary organization to where if you got your general here, you got your chiefs here and if one of them isn't there, the next one takes over, all the way down to your buck private and...
I was in the military.
So, well, then you should understand.
I do understand that.
And it's, and it's set up, and it's set up that way. So if, if Jesse happens to be at a fire and something's going on with, with the police department...
I wouldn't understand where you're going.
Let me, let me finish.
We have two sergeants that go ahead and cut in.
But let me finish. So if Jesse's at a fire and he happens to be the command, the chief at the fire and something happens at the police department, his primary's always gonna be the police department. You got the next guy stepping up at the fire. You remember, they're volunteers. These are paid. Jesse's paid over here. He's the chief twenty-four hours a day, the police chief, twenty-four hours a day, not a chief for three or four hours at a fire scene.
I don't care if he works for the fire department as far as the head command to take over when he asks. I have a problem with that. I appreciate what you said and everything else, but I can't go with that. Now as far as him being down a little lower or if he's to the fire department or something, and maybe he's at the fire now, they can't. But if he's there to take his place, his responsibility is the crew. And he has to take care of that fire department while his people that he is ahead now is endangered and may need him for something. Go. That's the way I feel.
Yeah, but that's not how it is, Rick.
I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and argue. I already made up my mind and that's the way the military works.
First I need a, first I need a motion. Don't even have that yet. Uh, support.
Do we wanna break those out then?
Doesn't matter to me. I suppose you can.
Doesn't matter to me. Whoever makes the motion can decide.
I mean, gotta have the motion first.
If I can, real quick, when I was a captain on the department, I was still sergeant on the police department. And that was when the ice storm came in and I was working on the fire department at that time volunteering and I got a phone call saying you need to come in. So I turned my crew over to some, I understand what you're saying, Rick, but I'm just gonna say...
Okay, yeah.
I turned my crew over to the next person in line.
You're talking, because if he's gone...
I came in.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this from the aspect of, like, I'm at that conference, who's running the show here? I've got Jesse, if we have something in town, but if he gets a phone call from the police department, he steps away and he hands it down to the next person in line or to the next senior firefighter, like to Daryl. It's, it's kind of a...
I, I know, I know...
So they have somebody to go to in case something happens.
And we're a small town that is a big town in a way and everything else, but tonight, that's the way I feel.
I understand.
And I'm just gonna go along with that. And I, I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and argue about it or anything else. I just feel departments heads take care of their departments and the next guy takes it. Because if you wanna go, then you take his spot when he's gone and he'll take your spot when you're gone.
No, Frank had me on that list.
Yeah, you could do that.
I make a motion to approve Brandon as a lieutenant in the fire department.
Support.
Okay, motionless support. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to po, appoint Jesse Logan as deputy fire chief.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Further discussion, I should say.
No.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
No.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I knew it was gonna go that way.
Alright.
No, that's fine.
Well, it's a good discussion though.
No, yeah, that's fine.
Item number twelve, consider purchase of fire and EMS reporting software for the fire department.
Motion approved.
Thirty-two seventy-five.
Sorry.
Motionless support?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen is consider quote from TCK Concrete for the first phase of flooring at the fire department training building, an amount of six thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to consider resolution disposing of the old water meters and the MXUs.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fifteen is consider change order number one from Ferguson Water Works for the water meter replacement, an amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fourteen cents to install the large diameter meters.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Lees?